Thank you. The Planning Commission meeting for, what is the date?
November 11th.
April 11th, 2016. It's called order. And tonight, we have a presentation on Transportation Analysis 101. This is a work session. And the first thing that, as a group, we need to address before we proceed is two questions. One, after John has made his presentation and we have our questions answered, do we want to open the discussion for, to take public testimony or not? And that we can go either way. We've had work sessions in the past where we did and some where we did not. So maybe just to show a hands for...
Are you asking the Planning Commission?
Yes. Are we in favor of taking...
Planning Commission or both commissions?
Well, we can take from both.
Well, it's our official meeting.
Committee and the Planning Commission. Are you in favor of taking public testimony or not and say...
Yes.
Yes?
It's always good.
Okay. So I think we're in favor of taking public testimony. And then the other question is whether we want to set a certain time to cut off the meeting. I told Laura, eight o'clock sounded good to me, but...
Dancing the stars starts at eight.
Probably not good enough.
Fourteen forty-five.
How about we say for two hours? Is that fair enough?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. So, or less. You don't have to talk for two hours. You can talk for less. So, given that, let's go ahead and have our presentation and then we can get into the discussion after that.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm John Replinger and probably have testified before both of the, before all of you in one committee meeting or another over the recent years. So what I've tried to do is put together what I've called Transportation Planning Overview. And I've got a whole series of different topics, some of which you are fairly familiar with, some which you may not be familiar with. But I hope that by going through this presentation, you get a bit better understanding of how these different topics relate to each other. And I guess what I would like to do is have you interrupt me, ask me questions along the way.
We're good at that.
If we start getting into a little bit too much detail, maybe we'll go on. Hopefully, the first question or two you ask me, I'll say, "That's coming up later", which will make us all look good. But we'll see how it goes. So I thought what I would start with was something about the plans. I've identified four different plans here that I think you should be familiar with. The Oregon Highway Plan, which is adopted by the Oregon Transportation Commission, and it governs and provides the guidance on the state highway system. It's pretty specific in that way. It's a very detailed plan. It is, the Highway Plan is a subset of the Oregon Transportation Plan itself. There are similar plans in terms of a bikeway plan and freight plan and some of the other things. But Oregon Highway Plan is an important one, and of course, it's important to us because some of the major facilities in Oregon City are state highways. So we have to recognize and deal with that reality. The Regional Transportation Plan is adopted by Metro, and it covers the entire three-county area. It includes, I think, twenty-one or twenty-two different municipalities. And a lot of what is done in the Regional Transportation Plan is to show compliance with the statewide goals, like the Transportation Planning Rule and related things. Part of what we do in Oregon City is we have to make our transportation system plan consistent with the Regional Transportation Plan. The Regional Transportation Plan, adopted by Metro and acknowledged by the state, relieves us, relieves each of the cities and the counties, the three counties, from dealing with certain things that are required under state law. So we do have to work with and pay attention to the Regional Transportation Plan, making sure that our city plan is consistent with that plan. Third one I listed is the City of Oregon City's Transportation System Plan. It was adopted in 2013. The prior one was a 2001 version. Adoption of a city transportation system plan is required by state law, and it ends up being acknowledged by the state. It's adopted by the city, but acknowledged by the state. It is judged against compliance with the statewide planning goals. The fourth plan that is worth mentioning is the Clackamas County Transportation Plan. Like cities are required to adopt the Transportation System Plan, counties are also. And there's, of course, a certain amount of interface between the city and the county plan. But unlike the Oregon Highway Plan, which applies within the city, I think the County Transportation System Plan really applies outside of the city. But there are some of the fringe issues in the transfer of ownership and things like that. But the most important plan in terms of the city's responsibilities is the City TSP.
So how do the two dovetail with each other, in your opinion? Since I've heard quite a bit of testimony from our good friend Paul Edgar.
Well, I don't think that there's a lot of, probably not a lot of commonality. There was probably not a lot of attention to the two different plans. I think there are some inevitable conflicts. And frankly, I'm not very familiar with what the county plan says.
They did sit on our committees and they were part of our planning process.
Yeah, I remember that. But I mean, I think things in terms of, you know, they're obviously very similar to ours. Their capital improvements program is even more underfunded than ours. And obviously, with the May 17th advisory that they want us to vote on here about whether we want to pay a fee, you know, for road maintenance. But there's also issues with regard to, so specifically, what comes to mind is obviously the, is Holly Lane and other streets that are in the county that are, some of them are partially in the urban area and others aren't. And so you've got this basically inherent inequity of a road that may in the future need to be looked at from an urban standpoint, but really completely substandard, even under county regulations, as to what the road has any capacity to do. So we've got, you know, a lot of disconnects like that throughout not only our plan, but their plan. And it, you know, and I know that, again, they were on our advisory committee and we probably, I don't know if we sat on theirs, probably not, but we should have. But it seems to me that there are places where there should be commonality as opposed to, you know, doing this.
It probably should be. Both have to be reviewed against the statewide planning goals. It's an area that frankly needs more work.
Work.
Quick question.
Go ahead.
Quick question. So if the city or county plan is not acknowledged by the state, what are the repercussions? What kind of action can they take?
I guess I would say it's sort of, isn't really valid. Until it's acknowledged by the state, the plan is not fully valid as the justification for something.
Well, that, does that play out then if the city wanted to expand and it had to have in its plan that hadn't been acknowledged, some road improvements?
It was laying right there. I know who I am.
What happened?
I like being anonymous.
That's a, that's a legal technicality issue that I, but I can't really address.
Could it affect fundings?
Oh, yeah. The lack of, the lack of an acknowledged plan pretty much cuts agencies off from using federal funds.
So, John, what is the process that the state uses to acknowledge plan?
It's like Planning 101 question.
Yeah, that's, I really can't provide much detail.
For Oregon City, they paid for the, they paid for the plan through a grant and they, but I don't, I don't know of, and they were here to watch our plan get adopted. But I don't think they took action on their end.
I'm just wondering, it says acknowledged by State of Oregon. If there's a formal process for that or can you just say...
There's definitely a formal process.
So we went for acknowledgement with DLCD whenever we do...
Department of Land Conservation and Development, for the audience.
Thank you very much. Whenever we do anything, including the TSP. And so at the TSP, we kept them in the loop about what we were doing and why. And then when we did that staff report for the Transportation System Plan, it showed findings for compliance with their criteria as well.
So then we, as a city, we get a letter from the state saying, "We've acknowledged your plan", and it conforms or something to that nature?
Charles, it's sort of a bigger picture. The TSP is an auxiliary document to the comp plan. When the comp plan gets acknowledged, it includes all the supplemental documents that go with it, like when we did sewer water, et cetera. So when they acknowledge the plan, our comprehensive plan, it includes more than just, it isn't, they don't acknowledge the TSP just all by itself. They acknowledge that as an...
I guess that was my question.
Well, yeah.
They did when we adopted it.
I mean, Department of Transportation looks at it, but it goes along with the bigger, the bigger umbrella of our comprehensive plan and all the other documents that are underneath it. That's basically how it works.
But the timing is not always concurrent, so I'm just...
Because TSPs are on a different cycle than the comp plan.
So that's, that's why I'm asking if there's a formal process that, if we're out of sync with the comp plan and the TSP, do they look at it when we're done adopting it?
They did in 2014.
So Denise seems to know, Denise seems to know a lot about this. So Denise, how detailed...
Ask me how many times I've been through acknowledgement.
Like the question is, how detailed does the state look at all these plans?
They look at everything.
Do they look at every street and...
They look at, they look at everything.
Seventh Main Street, all that stuff? That's the state and city and they look at everything.
I don't think they, they look at, the way that they do it, they have transportation specialists at both the Department of Land Conservation and Development, and then they have the transportation specialists that deal with local governments at ODOT. So they work together. They have state agency coordination and they talk. I have actually a friend at DLCD that's a transportation specialist there.
Well, as we all know, the thing that keeps coming up here whenever we have meetings is people, like you say, on Holly Lane and other ones, who continually tell us that their road usage and trips, it does not coincide with anything that anybody else says it does. And I keep wondering, does the state look at something like that and say, "Well, all those people on Holly Lane that bring it to our attention, they're all wrong", and are, you know, you know...
I don't think it's to that level of specificity. I think it basically will be up to the two jurisdictions, in my opinion, that need to help resolve that issue.
Because as you know, there's always a conflict every time you have...
I know. Beaver Creek Road, you name it.
Tom, I would say this. I would say that for one, throughout the, for our Transportation System Plan, ODOT was involved because we funded it through a TGM grant. ODOT was, was involved through the specific scope of work that we advertised for the consultant to get. And then they attended every meeting that we had. They were one of the key technical advisors on that plan. And some of the numbers pieces come from regional models. We're using the same models that, say, Metro's using for any agency within the Metro jurisdiction. So I, there may be some intricacies to that. We're a particular agency, but I want to delve into that with a little bit more detail than what might be in the Metro model. But, so by the time we get to final approval of the plan, we're, you know, well, the state's well informed about the type of chapters, the type of meetings, the meeting log. We had to keep all of that information so that, they're pretty informed.
You're all talking about process. At what point do these things get funded?
Jonathan's got a question.
It's important to recognize that the Oregon City's Transportation Plan is a 20-year multi-mode of plan. So it's looking at all modes of transportation, not just vehicular traffic. It's also a 20-year constrained, fiscally constrained plan. So, and that's broken up into three segments into short-term, medium-term, and long-term funded projects. So the city has a ton of projects that they love to do, but these are just the fiscally constrained plans that are projects that have been identified and placed into the plan.
And we've talked quite a bit about Holly Lane, but the reality is there's numerous roads that go through Oregon City that Oregon City is not responsible for directly. We have state roads that are passing through Oregon City. And so when we have people complaining about particular intersections, sometimes it's, "Well, that's not our problem."
Well, it is our problem, but...
I know, but that's the response. That's always the response. "Well, that's not our road. That's somebody else's road."
Okay, moving on, talked about the plans and I've listed some other resources. And these are things that we make, that we make use of in terms of our transportation planning here in Oregon City. First one I listed, Oregon City Municipal Code. We've gone through a lot of refinement in that. There are several sections that deal with the planning and with the standards, with, with roads. A lot of you are very familiar with that in terms of the, the way that the criteria for land use approvals have to address all of the aspects of the code. It also gives us the guidance on things like what the operational standards are. So part of the code was amended after the Transportation System Plan was adopted in 2013. The Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices is a big, thick book that is a Federal Highway Administration document. It's applicable to all facilities, all agencies throughout the, throughout the state and the region. There are standards that are entirely national. The State of Oregon makes some modifications. Some of you who've traveled extensively, for example, are familiar with what we call the Iowa Pennant. It's a diagonal, it's a triangular, yellow triangular sign that goes on the opposite side of the highway from what we usually see around here, and it warns you, "Do not pass." That is not used in Oregon. So that's just one example of some of the changes that, that we have. But the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices is used for, to guide all the pavement marking, the signing, the sizes of signing, the location, simply the configuration of the, of the red, yellow, and green on the traffic signal. All standard because we need to make it standard for drivers. The MUTCD, as it's known, is something that provides us with the guidance for managing the transportation infrastructure, particularly as it relates to signing pavement markings and traffic signals. The Highway Design Manual is an ODOT document. It sets the standards for state highways, not only in terms of design, but in the way it is, what one plans for the, for the system. And it's got everything in it, from placement of guardrails to lane widths to, to the grade that's applicable on state highways. Trip Generation is a document developed by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. We're now up to the ninth edition of it. Seems that about every three years, there's a new one that, that comes out. This is a document that we make quite a bit of use of in the development review area. The Trip Generation is a, now it's up to a three-volume set that gives us statistics that have been observed by different traffic engineers around the country for all manner of different land use types. It allows us to predict with some level of confidence what the trip generation will be from various facilities. When we have something like a shopping center or an office building, we're basing that on studies that have been done, in some cases, in hundreds or a thousand different communities, different times. The Trip Generation gives us information. Sometimes relates it to the number of employees. Sometimes it relates to the square footage of a facility. So that's a document that's readily available for us to use. Henry?
What, does, has anybody ever actually gone through a city block or three-block area and tried to use those trip generation figures for each and every business in that block? And then combine it to see what that block is producing?
I'm not aware of anything. There probably have been some studies that have been done. There have been some, there's been some criticism of it over predicting the amount of traffic in some cases. One aspect that is generally acknowledged is the trip generation tends to be for new developments in suburban areas. So, you know, we may not have much information about, I mean, you take a, an office building in a friend, in a suburban office park, probably has a higher trip generation rate than one that's in a downtown car. It's the best information we've got. We know there are some deficiencies in it. We know that things change over time. For example, banks over the, most of us here are old enough that we remember that you always had to actually go to the bank to transact your business. You know, then grocery stores started providing cash when you'd write the check. And now people don't use checks anymore. So, and so much of it is done electronically. So there's some evidence to suggest that the bank trip generation rate has been falling over time. Well, it's up to the professionals in the, in the field to provide evidence, to do the legwork, the groundwork, to develop those trip generation rates and share them. And there is a committee of the Institute of Transportation Engineers that goes through and works on these updates of the Trip Generation Manual.
Now it's drive-through coffee shops.
So there's nothing that really would indicate in total how much a city business area might generate or do as a whole?
Well, we'll get to that in, just at the bottom of the page.
Okay.
So...
Also, John, can you talk about residential? When we have a lot of land use applications, we tend to get a lot of comments based on traffic.
Right. The residential is, it's a, there are thousands upon thousands of studies that have been done in terms of the residential. And in a lot of cases, the, there are differences. I, and I have undertaken some of these studies on, during my career. A lot of times, there is a transition in a, in a house in terms of the trip generation rate. It becomes very, it's pretty low with the, with the new family that has moved in. It rises as children starting, starting to participate in school and school activities. And then the empty nesters, it starts going down again. So we have this, this kind of a fluctuation of, over time in terms of a single-family home. But that's probably one of the most solid pieces of information we have in terms of trip generation of single-family detached houses. It's about 9.51 trips per day and just about 1.01 during the PM peak hour and a little bit less than one during the AM peak hour.
But that's a statistical average.
Statistical average.
Per household.
Per household.
Can you explain what a trip is and what peak hour is?
Good, Laura, because a trip is your departure from home to work is a trip. And in fact, if you go from home to breakfast or the coffee shop and then to work, you've just taken two trips. When you leave work and go out for lunch, that's another one. Back to work, if you go back to work in the afternoon, is, is another. And then on your way home, if you stop at the grocery store, well, that's another trip, from work to the grocery store, the grocery store to the gas station, the gas station to home. Each of those times is a trip.
Does that account for two-car families or the three-car family?
Well, it counts for everything. You know, and as I said, it, it varies kind of depending upon the stage of life of the, of the household.
Couple of questions then. The little journey that you described, that's not nine trips for the house.
No.
That's one trip for, or two trips because an out and a back, that's two.
Exactly.
And the other things are trips, counting towards the bank, counting towards the work, counting towards...
Right. And, and those, all of those trips, the 9.5 trips at the household end seem, I mean, a lot of us say, "That's way too high." But then you start reflecting on the, the fact that, that it is the average, it's the statistical average, and you start looking at, you know, the family with multiple kids in, in school. Means they take, it's, okay. One member of the household leaves to go to work. The other one takes the, takes the child or children to school, comes back. Well, there you are, up to three trips already by eight o'clock in the morning. And then there's the going to pick up the kid and come home, take them to, take the child to piano lessons, take the other child to sports practice, and then, you know, it starts adding. And then there's the grocery, trip to the grocery store and there's the, and then there's the getting the pizza delivered. There's two more trips. The pizza guy comes to the house and leaves.
And the teenage boy.
There you are.
Well, I, before we go, I want to get my second question answered then. Okay. Is the Trip Generation Manual regional?
It's a national...
Okay, so that means that they're saying that a Safeway in Manhattan generates the same amount of trips that a Safeway in Oregon City does.
Well, we probably don't have too many samples in trip generation for a grocery store in Manhattan. Probably have, we probably have Manhattan, Kansas included in that. But there's probably 400 study, probably 400 studies of grocery stores in trip generation. And there are probably only a handful of them that are in truly dense urban areas.
True, but the manuals, the manual nationwide. So the Safeway in Manhattan will have the same amount of trips generated as the same, as the Safeway in Oregon City if it's the same square footage store, according to the manual.
Right.
So it doesn't take into, really into account anything about urban density or access to alternate modes of transportation?
Right. Now, the, of course, it's also true that in terms of that Safeway in, in Manhattan, that what they've probably done is they've probably counted the trips and they didn't necessarily know how people were getting there, what mode of transportation they were using. So they may very well have been counting the walking trips and the, and the subway trips because there's no parking associated with that facility. So they may not, they may have seen the people coming in and out of the door.
But it's an average.
It's an average. And we are always, we are always open to people providing us with their own data. And we accept it. And it's right there in terms of our, of our traffic studies and our code about allowing people to submit what they think is better data. So in some cases, the data is pretty thin. In some cases, it seems to be pretty solid. But we do have a procedure where we can... But we do have a procedure where we can evaluate that.
In the few years that I've been on the planning commission, I know we've had several people come in, whether it be South End or any concept plant, and they count, they constantly conflict with the numbers that are presented, saying those are so far off for the, Paul Edgar's one, as you used to example, and they just constantly conflict with, and we're always like, well, who do we believe? And we, we want to believe the state and those figures, but some of their figures make more sense and, because we're, it's further to go to a grocery store here than it is in Manhattan, let's say, or some of the trips that they're talking about.
It's probably easier to go to a grocery store here than in Manhattan. So, maybe if you've forgotten the sour cream, well, you go back.
It's a long ways from South End or all the way in, but I know what you're saying.
Yeah.
Having, having lived in both New York City and here, I would say we're much more auto-centric here.
Yeah.
People don't own cars in Manhattan.
That's what I was getting at.
So, how do apartment complexes factor in on that?
Apartment complexes are typically quite a bit lower. They're probably about one-third lower than single-family homes. Now, the other thing about apartment complexes is, in many cases, it will really depend upon how many children there are in the, in the dwellings. That's why we see, say, in our retirement community, and there are, there are values in trip generation for, you know, senior housing sort of places that indicate a lower trip generation rate for those than the ones that tend to have more families in it. But, we do see, the typical thing that happens in suburban America is people may start in a, an apartment complex, and then upon developing a family, larger number of members of the household, there tends to be a shift toward single-family homes. So, you've automatically replaced that family with the new family starting up in the apartment complex. So, it tends to be, again, pretty solid information with an apartment complex being more in the range of about six or seven trips per day.
John, since this is a national model and manual, does that mean that most jurisdictions throughout the nation subscribe to this way of measuring traffic?
Yes, most do. Most, most agencies, in terms of the land use applications, say pretty much what we say, which is, use ITE or provide us with something plausible, solid evidence that something else should be used and is more appropriate.
Is there an alternative?
There's not.
National alternative?
No.
So, when a developer comes before us, these are the numbers he's using versus what some of the neighborhood feels are correct because they've counted cars or whatever it means they've used, the developers who come before us are using these?
Yes. Developers typically use these, and we do on, on a number of occasions have a developer who comes in, particularly someone who is, you know, a chain that has multiple experiences in other communities of similar size in the West or in Oregon, and say, "Our statistics, based on these other locations, says we're going to get, we have this, these characteristics." So, I'll give you a couple other examples when we get into a presentation a bit further. Parking generation is another document developed by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. It has not gone through as many iterations as trip generation has. There tends to be a lot more variability in parking and I think generally the philosophy is that as long as there is enough parking, you know, we kind of don't, don't worry about it. There's, it's, it's a, it's a built and done, so we don't end up studying it very much. Highway Capacity Manual, this is another really important one. This is a Transportation Research Board. Again, we've been through several iterations of that over the, over the years. Highway Capacity Manual is the one that tells us how to assess what traffic operations are, are happening. They're the ones who have talked about level of service and aspects like this. That's the document that tells us how to judge the capacity of an intersection, how to evaluate the effect that changes will have on the, on the system. Again, that's a big, thick document with lots and lots of, of equations and examples and things to sort through. Not only does it add information about intersections, but about ramps and weaving sections for how to deal with the freeways and, and the like. The other thing that I thought was worth mentioning here is the Regional Transportation Forecasting Model, developed by, developed and continually refined by Metro. Metro has been doing this with their regional model for 40 or 50 years, trying to predict the amount of traffic that's going to occur in the region with a focus on a 20- to 30-year horizon. So, Metro has been, I would say, on the leading edge of regional modeling for, for 40 or 50 years, back in the, in the days when it was CRAIG, Columbia Association of what Regional?
Columbia Regional Association of Governments.
Right, thank you.
Quick question about cities' capacity for, like, the parking generation. If there's standards for that, and then a city like Portland decides it wants density and no parking for whatever reasons, can they adopt that policy?
Oh, absolutely.
And right in the face of the normal practice of what's generated there by the transportation engineers?
Exactly. The, the, the trip, the trip generation tends to be a prescriptive, use this or something else. With, with parking generation, it's more of a, data, best available data, not necessarily a prescriptive, not used in a prescriptive manner by most agencies.
Guidelines, and you can pick them or not?
They're not even guidelines. They're samples of what appears to have occurred at various locations. Some agencies may be more heavily reliant upon the data from parking generation. I'm, I'm really not aware of, of that being used for that purpose. Not to say that there, there isn't somebody using it. The Regional, Regional Transportation Forecasting Model has gone through an enormous number of iterations. They have, they used to, used to focus on daily traffic, and then they looked at peak hour traffic, and the, the current, the current focus of the Metro model is on a two-hour afternoon peak period and on a midday peak. So, they, they tend to develop the information from that, for those two, two different time periods. The other thing that we have with the regional model is that Metro has made extensive use of travel diaries that are recorded by people, various volunteers or sampling, and it has been done, done a number of times. I'm not sure of all the details of how they do it, but as I gave that example of the trips that you might take in your household, that's exactly the kind of information that Metro seeks with their travel diaries. They want to know about where you went, for what reason, at what time, and what all of that travel was that you took during the day. And with that hypothetical example I, I gave you, you could see that a lot of those trips had nothing to do with home. They were when you were out in the community. So, that's one of the real key pieces of information that Metro tries to use with their travel modeling. We know that people start their journey in the morning at a residence, at a home, and generally go to a place where there is employment, either their employment or a place where they are seeking services that are offered at that place of employment, whether it's the banking relationship that they have, or whether they're buying something at a store, or whether it's a, you know, just a service that they're, that they're getting.
Kids who drive to school.
Absolutely, school.
Does Metro consider the transit system in, in their model?
Yes, and that's one of the things they have tried to do, and really expanded upon that in the last 10 or 20 years, is they've tried to get more and more information on the different modes. So, not only do they want to know about your, your, your driving trip, they want to know about the walking trip that you took. You know, you didn't maybe, depending upon where you're, where you're going, you may not have the option of driving to your work, you may drive to the parking garage and walk from there to work. So, they want to know all of those details, and they've tried to use that in terms of building their model. So, the other thing about their model is that it focuses on the major street network and the, the throughways and arterial plan. Their model does not include the little streets in Oregon City. It includes a bunch, and it includes 213, and it includes Beaver Creek, and it also includes, you know, Leland and Lynn and some of those, but, you know, it's not, it's not including the, any of the local streets, and it's not including most of the collectors we have in the, in the city. Those simply don't fit into the model. But it, they have done extensive amount of work, taking the information about the trips from the travel diaries, and they have information about the employment, all the employment by different categories of employment, whether it's a, an industrial facility does not draw too many trips, other than the workers who are there. Maybe it includes a few salesmen calling, it includes the deliveries of raw materials, and it includes the, the trucks carrying out the finished product, but it doesn't include many trips at the industrial site. Contrast that with the, another facility, like a retail facility, a shopping center, where the principal activity is the, the customers going. So, all of that is factored into the model. And the other thing they do, once they create this model, is they do extensive testing to ground-truth it against the traffic volumes that they're seeing on the major street network.
So, would it be correct to assume that they, in the forecast, they could look at maybe public transit improvements and equate that to a decreased number of trips?
They, they do that kind of work, absolutely. And in fact, right now, there's a, a study going on in Portland, it's the Powell Division Bus Rapid Transit Project that they're, that they're working on. Now, I mean, that gets into real detail where they, the buses have to run on the streets, so they take, they even consider the travel time in those corridors for the bus as it relates and how attractive using the bus in that corridor will be based on that travel time. So, unlike if they evaluate it against a, like, rail line on an exclusive right-of-way, it would be faster and would be unaffected by the congestion predicted on the corridor. So, yeah, they try to do all of that. Yeah, Henry?
When I was last associated with that model, they were having trouble with the fringe areas, getting it to, to play right. And Oregon City was definitely on the fringe area at that time. Have they done anything to, to help correct that? They were, especially with people moving in and out, like, people coming from the town of Beaver Creek, coming into Oregon City and then passing through to wherever.
I think they've made some big progress on it. I'm not ready to say that it's great. In fact, one of the, the studies we're working on leads me to be somewhat suspicious. I think what we have to keep in mind is that a, that a regional model is a forecasting tool. And we know that when you get to the fringes, we have fairly large geographical areas that are associated with the, with the, the area, and that's not, it's not refined enough sometimes for the uses we want to make of it.
It looks on your list here, scenario planning, are you going to discuss that at all?
No. No, we don't, we just get it right the first time. We don't need, we don't need no scenario. We can talk about that, I haven't, I hadn't taught it that in terms of... Well, it's, it's not really something that we, that we do because, for the most part, the Metro process go, is one of going through an allocation of population and employment. You know, the Portland State University is the one who's the final authority for picking the population and employment for counties. And then it goes down to city, when it comes into the Metro area, Metro then works with all of the cities and the counties to essentially divide all of that up. So, the Portland Metro region is expected to gain a million population in the next X number of years, and Metro will be going through and looking at the, the urban growth boundary, the urban reserves, and they'll be saying, okay, at these densities and, and stuff, how much room does each community have to accommodate that growth and that employment? And it is all dibbed up in a, in a very structured and in some ways a political process, but all based upon the previous plans. So, I think that because of the manner in which the planning has been done and the urban growth boundary and all of that, that I think we probably haven't done very much in the way of a scenario planning.
Because I know DLCV is pushing pretty hard for scenario planning.
Okay.
Because of the reduction, they want to reduce vehicle miles traveled.
Right.
And they're looking at increasing, increasing parking or, or increasing parking or more buses, more public transit, they're looking at all the different scenarios.
Okay.
That the communities can do to decrease the vehicle miles traveled by individual households.
Okay, I, good, good clarification. I was thinking you were talking about scenario planning being more of a land use-based one, so, anyway. Pushing on here a little bit in terms of, now I'm going to shift a little bit toward some of the, sort of the land use process and the, the way that, that I end up interacting with you and with the planning and public works departments here in terms of assessing traffic impacts. We have the, essentially four different steps that are involved in the, in traffic impacts, and this also applies to, to a certain extent, to the regional, regional modeling. We have trip generation, which we talked about at some length, in terms of the number of trips, whether it's a vehicle trips or person trips or auto trips that are taken at each individual origin or, or destination. Talking about the trip generation, I thought it was worth the, talking a little bit about those, you know, different trip types that we've probably talked about in terms of some of the land use activities we've had. Primary trips, pass-by trips, diverted-length trips, and internal trips. So, primary trips are the ones where there is essentially only one reason for you to go to that destination. For example, you're, if you're going, if you're going from home to the grocery store and back, you're making a pri, in terms of that grocery store, you are making a primary trip. The primary purpose of your going there is the shopping trip. The pass-by trip is the one where you are coming home The pass-by trip is the one where you are coming home from work, and you say, oh, I need to pick up a gallon of milk, just duck into the seven eleven or Plaid Pantry, pick it up on my way home. It's right there on your route, it was not a primary trip, your real, your primary trip in that case is going from work to home. The diverted link trip is similar to the, uh, uh, pass-by trip, except it's one where you are, you are altering your route, you're going a little bit off your route to, uh, to have that interaction with the, with the location. It's when you're, uh, you're, you're driving home and you realize you need to go to the bank or the grocery store, that is a bit off your route, so you're deviating before rejoining your, your primary.
Or you hear about an accident on two oh five, so you take every...
No, that's, no, that's just a, no. We don't even try to forecast that, but, anyway.
So diverted link trip would be me going to work, but stopping at the two schools along the way to drop off my kids?
Yes, good, good example.
Well, are they out, out of your way?
It's en route.
Yeah, because I mean, I, I think, I have, I, I use the going home side of the road scenario, so I may be, my end destination may be Portland.
Right.
But I can make three right-hand turn trips on my way there, so I'm not having to cross back over traffic to go to my end destination, but I can do three things on my way there.
Right.
I was thinking more about when I forgot that the Sillwood Bridge was closed.
Yes, that's what I was thinking about.
Yeah.
That's a diverted trip.
That's definitely diverted.
Remember, April sixteenth, eighteenth, it's going to be closed again, so, um, so, it's also important to realize that those trips are only applicable to, um, to retail and other types of, of businesses. They're never applicable to home, to residences. You don't, you don't decide on your way home to stop at somebody else's house, I mean, as a, as a general rule, you know, you're not going to get those. We have, we have zero diverted link or pass-by trips for residences. Now, there may be some examples of carpooling or something like that, but we cannot count on that. Again, we have extensive information about pass-by trip percentages from the Institute of Transportation Engineers. And, like, for example, gasoline stations have very high pass-by trip percentages, about eighty-some percent of the trips, it's not going to the gas station to come home, you do the gas station on your way to somewhere else. It's also interesting that we have, um, different percentages, and the best example is shopping centers. We have a different percentage of pass-by trips depending upon the size of the shopping center. The larger the shopping center, the fewer, the lower, I think the lower the pass-by trip percentage is. But, anyway, uh, on some, on some things, like, like fast food restaurants, gas stations, we have good data, um, shopping center is probably the best, and it's the pass-by trips. Now, the reason that's important is because all of those trips affect traffic operations at the site driveway, but they don't necessarily affect traffic operations at two thirteen and Beaver Creek, or at the I two oh five ramps. If you're coming home from, uh, you know, from downtown Portland, or you're coming from, uh, uh, from the Clackamas Town Center area, you're driving down two thirteen, you're going through the, the interchange at, at two thirteen, you've already made that part of the trip, you've had that, and as to whether or not you stop at, uh, at the supermarket on your way home, um, that pass-by trip is already accounted for at all of those key locations, but we need to specifically account for it at the entrance to the, the, the shopping center or to the, to the grocery store. So, the pass-by and diverted link trips have a lesser impact than does a primary trip. The fourth type to talk about are the internal trips, and that's really applicable to a shopping center, for example, or a shopping center with outlined retail paths. How many of the trips are we going to have that, that people drive into the facility and go to more than one establishment? In lots of cases, there are multiple visits, uh, within that.
You're talking about somebody driving internally?
Well, I'm talking about, if they're driving internally, we sort of really don't care, that's the shopping center's problem. But what we have is, if we take that trip generation rate for the bank, and the grocery store, and the video store, we may have somebody who drives in once to that shopping center, and goes to all three of those locations on their way home. So, we have a distinct possibility of overcount, if we treat each of those three as a separate generator, we have a distinct possibility, we're going to be overcounting some, because we know that some people are going to make those internal trips.
Now, are you talking about trips that might be, uh, walking trips?
Whether they're walking trips or driving trips, um, what we know is they're not on the street system.
So if I visited three different places at, say, I went to the grocery store, and the bank, and the video store, but I parked one time and walked, that, that still counts as three internal trips?
It's still, it's, yeah, you've got three internal destinations, and in terms of the city's perspective, it's probably doesn't really, we don't really care very much about whether they're driving or walking in there.
So it's kind of academic?
They're, it's academic. They're not impacting Malala Avenue, you know, they're, so, in terms of assessing how that intersection at the shopping center driveway, the signalized intersection is working, it sort of doesn't matter whether people are walking or driving around once they get in there. But that's an important distinction for us to make, and, uh, the applicant's traffic engineer, on a complex development, will have to do quite a bit in terms of calculations to determine that, to accurately guess, predict, what the trip generation is going to be at the site driveways. And part of it is going through all of those.
I said something lighthearted earlier, but it really made a difference, I worked downtown Portland most of my life, and before, most of the people in the offices downtown, before we left, had to check on two oh five, eighty-four, ninety-nine, or McLaughlin, or, excuse me, McAdam, decide which way you're going to go home, and then you have to take all the side roads, because all the traffic that heard about it also is on those same roads as you.
Exactly.
And it really made a mess, and I, I, eight-quarter inch of a snow, and you're dead.
Well, yeah.
In this city, but I'm just saying, every night, coming from downtown Portland, you had to make a quick decision which direction, and sometimes you still had to make a change.
So that, so that was you then?
Yeah, it was me and everybody else.
Quick question, there's a, there's a new trend on live work.
Yes.
So if you live above and you go to a grocery store, and to a restaurant, you just walk there, is that a non-trip or is that a trip?
No, those are each trips, those are walking trips.
And those are internal, all three of them?
Well, they would, they would probably be internal trips. I mean, if you are living within that, within that super block that has all of those services, if you're not getting out onto the street network, I mean, presumably, hopefully you were one of those who filled out a travel diary from, for metro, and the metro accurately modeled that and predicted that behavior, and that because you were doing walking trips, they counted as walking trips, and when metro was validating their model to predict the amount of traffic on the major street network, you weren't there, and so it helped them with their model. So, yeah, we think that, uh, that metro is making strides at accounting for that type of behavior, that proximity issue, and the travel, the mode of travel that they used.
May I ask a question, you've mentioned the diary a couple times, I just asked this gentleman next to me, and I've never heard of this diary, I've never heard metro ask me anything about my driving habits.
Right, well, you know, there are, what, something like a mil, a million, million households in the, in the Portland metro region, and I think their, their diaries were in the ten to twenty thousand.
Really?
Range, so...
And they just send it out via email, we like to get a record of what you drive?
I, I think that's essentially how they did it.
Okay, interesting.
Um, and I think we're going to probably see more of that done with larger sample size, probably on, you know, phone app sort of stuff. They are making real efforts to improve their data sets.
Hmm, okay. It occurs to me that, uh, when you talk about this, uh, internal trips, that that would be a gauge for whether a neighborhood would be considered highly walkable or not?
Well, this would be mostly on the, um, on the, sort of, on the shopping center size, side of things, um, it'd be on the, on the employment stuff, not necessarily on residential.
But could that be applied to an urban setting where you're, you're looking at how many trips are not taken by automobile?
Well, I think, I think that, uh, we'd probably refer to that as a, as a mode issue, rather than internal, uh, see, with internal trips, we usually are, are thinking in terms of retail to retail, uh, retail to, to services, or from residential to, uh, retail, so I guess it could count, uh, some in that, uh, as well. I think we probably have not had too many examples in Oregon City where we've, uh, used internal that has involved any kind of a retail component. Uh, I think we're starting to see some of that.
John, if I drive from here to Vancouver on a daily basis, just up and back.
Yes.
And the impact I have on the transportation system, uh, for a year, would seem to be more of an impact than if I drove from here to Milwaukee and back.
Yeah, good point.
Aren't they interested in the impact on the transportation system, the wear and tear?
I, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that metro has really paid very much attention to, I'm not sure, I'm not sure, Bob, that's, uh, um, most of what they're trying to do, I think, is to forecast the amount of use, and leaving it up to other people to, to assess the, uh, the impacts on infrastructure wear. Uh, but what they're, I mean, in terms of this travel diary, they want to know the locations that you're talking about, you know, the where and the when, so, uh, yeah, if you're, if you're indicating it's a long-distance trip to Vancouver as opposed to Milwaukee, you know, they have that information about trip length. Um, so, and, and there's a lot of that information available. When I was working on the Columbia River Crossing Project, the I five replacement bridge, you know, we learned that the average trip length for trips that cross that, you know, were considerably longer, they were in the, in the range of twenty-mile trips. Every trip that crossed that, the average was about twenty miles, as opposed to the region as a whole, the average worked that was less than ten miles. So, a lot of that information is available from the, from the regional model.
Jonathan?
Uh, and part of your question, a vehicle, a single vehicle doesn't have that much impact as far as maintenance is concerned, compared to trucks. Truck has heavy wear on the road surface, and the modeling is looking more at congestion and...
Yeah. They do also have a truck model, they have a truck freight model, it's part, was one of the components of the, of the metro model. So, in fact, there'll be information in the, in the metro model, and trucks have a, have a different schedule of their activities. The, the trucking industry really tries to avoid the PM peak hour. They try to, to have most of their activity early, um, early in the morning, or mid-morning, or early afternoon, so...
Getting with, I think you're looking at maintenance, though, vehicles don't have that, they don't degrade the roadway as much as a truck. I think it's like a hundred car trips for one trip over.
Wow.
Or a big semi, they really have a, because they're bouncing, and they have a heavy load, so they impact roadway a lot, and I'm not sure about if my number's correct.
With the tire surface area and all of that, or...
I just, so don't quote me on that, please, but I just know that trucks impact for maintenance purposes a lot more than a vehicle, I think that's what you asked.
Unless you have a stud of tires.
One other question I had for you, because all this is really interesting, and I've had so many questions asked of me. You said that metro is trying to control some of the centers, like Foster, turning it to one lane in each direction, making bike paths, and several people, they were discussing this on Sunday, doesn't that mean that all those people who rely so much on their cars are just going to take another, another route like Powell, or Burnside, or Side Streets, and doesn't that put more pressure on the other roads when metro areas take that?
And it, it may. There, there will likely be some diversion, but, uh, and I'm sure it was, it was modeled to see what the impact was. I think that with the number of cases, like, uh, I'm not sure on, on, on Foster, but I know that there was a big queue and cry about a part of Holgate being restripped from four lanes to, uh, to two. And frankly, the, the impacts were minimal, because there was not a capacity constraint. The four lanes on Holgate were not being used very effectively. It did allow people to choose to drive fifteen miles an hour over the limit and not have anybody interfere, you know, slow them down, but, uh, I would say that's an example where it had, you know, the reduction in capacity had no effect, because it was not operating anywhere near its capacity.
I drove up Foster yesterday, and a lot of retail stores have signs that they're totally against the, the cutting down the amount of traffic that they allow on Foster, I mean, store after source, store signs.
But Tom, I, I, you know, as much as I, I know people like to bash metro, that's the city of Portland, that's not metro making the change, making the suggestion.
I thought metro controlled it, though.
Metro does the modeling.
No, metro does not control local roads.
Metro has a tool, known as the model, regional model, it can be used, but, uh, no, that's a, that's just, like, Denise is absolutely correct, that's the city of Portland, uh, decision.
So each city uses that data as they choose?
Yes.
They're not dictated by metro how to use...
Right, now, there are certain things that metro prescribes that have to be done.
Guidelines.
Like, uh, the, uh, parking ratios and some things like that, that they developed in response to the statewide mandates, and that each of the cities then has to follow along with the metro. But in terms of the design features of a road, that's going to be up to the individual uh, a, agency that is responsible and is the owner of that road.
So, we, we have about forty-five minutes left in the time that we allotted, and I want to make sure you get through all of your presentation. I know that everybody's, wants to participate, but I want to make sure you get through your whole presentation.
Okay, well, let me, let me get a couple things on this, and we'll keep ourselves moving along. Uh, trip distribution is part of that, how do people tr, travel between which, how, how many, how much desire do people have to go to different parts of the community? I mean, we can, uh, a lot of us know that Beaverton exists, and a lot of us probably have never been there, or, you know, we go there for some special reason. So, it's a, it's a, it's an, it's attractive for certain trip purposes, but because it's so far away, we don't go there very often. We're much more likely to go to the nearby location, so, that's the trip distribution, how does traffic happen on a regional basis? Mode split, we talked about a little bit, we've got walking trips, we've got bike trips, we have transit trips, we have auto trips. Auto trips account for most of it, but... have auto trips. Auto trips account for most of it. But, certain types of trips, like transit trips within a car, end up being very attractive. Or because of high pricing on parking, can be attractive. The walking trips and bike trips applicable more to the shorter trips. Traffic assignment, then, is where we go to the point of deciding the exact route that people travel. When we have a development come in, like at the Hilltop Mall, what routes are people going to be taking? Which driveways are they going to use? Performance standards. Well, here's one. We could, we could spend, we could spend a couple hours on this one.
For days or weeks?
Okay. Let me go through it quickly, and we'll probably get into a little bit of discussion here. The level of service is the classic performance standard that we used to always use. It's based upon delay. Number of seconds of delay experienced by the average motorist during various times of the day at either a signalized or unsignalized intersection. It's a letter scale, A through E, and A is, A is great, means you don't have to wait very long. E can be over a minute or 75 seconds, depending. There's a different standard, there's different, different delay is tolerated. To get that same letter grade, there's a different, a different number of seconds associated with a signalized or unsignalized intersections. A signalized intersection, you know inevitably you're going to get that green light. When you're at a stop sign on the minor street, and you've got the major street traffic just gone by, you start getting antsy earlier, because you're not sure when your gap is going to come in traffic. You've got to be constantly on alert. Does that guy come fast enough? Can I get it? Can I make that left turn? So, anyway, that's the level of service based on seconds of delay. That was our old standard. When we adopted the TSP, we adopted a new standard based on the volume to capacity ratio. Oregon Department of Transportation has been using this volume to capacity ratio for 20 or 30 years. Metro started using it about 10 years ago and pretty much mandated that we all use the volume to capacity ratio. When we adopted the volume to capacity ratio as our standard in the TSP, we also accepted that we're going to have a higher level of congestion than we used to think was tolerable. So, the primary focus of our performance standards is on intersections. That's where we have our congestion. In spite of what people on Holly Lane may say, there's actually plenty of capacity on Holly Lane, but it's the intersections at each end that are the controlling factor. That's the weak link, because that's where we have the crossing traffic. It has to be apportioned between the east-west and the north-south. We can run north-south simultaneously, we can run east-west simultaneously, but we can't do it all unless we have grade-separated intersection. So, it's the intersections where we have our issues. We also have performance standards that are applicable to freeways and ramps and rural highways. We don't deal with them much, partly because we, as a city, do not have any responsibility for those, and also because they're kind of beyond our, beyond our control. But they do exist. The manner in which we assess the performance standards is prescribed by that Highway Capacity Manual. It's up to us to set the standard, but the Highway Capacity Manual tells us to do it. I mean, we could decide that we want to have a different standard that allows for more delay, or more hours of congestion. In fact, we may be facing that with our alternative mobility standards for the Highway 213 Beaver Creek intersection, because there's no reasonable fix for it. So, that's what I wanted to get through on this slide, and now maybe we...
Just wanted to say something contradictory to what you said about Holly Lane. Their main complaint is not the level of traffic, it's the fact that there's, there's no shoulders and that there's some sharp hairpins. And I've taken it occasionally, and you see car accidents all the time of cars not taking those corners correctly. That's their main complaint.
Absolutely. And highway capacity is just one factor. You know, we don't have a, we frankly don't have much, by the way, of a safety standard. I mean, that's been a new, a new thing that the feds are trying to push people into, our highway safety audits and things like that. Frankly, we've all talked about the fact that we don't have enough money to go around. You know, we're barely keeping the system patched together. We all know how to make things safer, and how to improve the capacity, but we don't have money to do them. So, you know, the tools are there. Some safety things could be implemented fairly economically, but some of them are really expensive. And it's a, I mean, it's a huge issue. Certainly, when I was a county traffic engineer, you know, every week I'd get a question. How many people have to be killed before you do something about this? You know, and I've got culverts that are disintegrating, I've got a traffic signal that's 40 years old, it does not have the basic conflict monitor system in it, that, I mean, every signal in the built in the last 40 years has had one. I've still got one out there, you know.
That's the old mechanical click, 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 click.
Oh, yeah, we've got some of that. And so, what are the priorities? So...
Well, when we were considering the Beaver Creek concept plan, there was a representative from ODOT, and he pointed out that congestion does not necessarily create less safe intersections unless people get impatient. You're talking about waiting at a side street for your break to get in, but he said, generally speaking, congested intersections by themselves don't create unsafe driving conditions.
And the other factor is that, and I saw it as county traffic engineer, we put in a, we put in a traffic signal, and we immediately, first year, we have triple the number of crashes that we had. It was easy as a four-way stop. It drove people crazy, because it would take them so long to get through there. But there were very few crashes. The crashes could be attributed to drunk drivers at night and stuff, but then you put in a traffic signal, and you get rear-end crashes, because you've got the guy who's thinking, I'm going to make it through on that yellow, and the other guy in front of him stops. So, you know, different types of crashes. But, yeah, John is absolutely right. You have a congested system, you've got slow-moving traffic, you may have fender benders, but you're unlikely to have fatalities or serious injuries. So, the safety aspects are all a complex issue. Related to, but not the same as something, as something as congestion. So...
I think, I think Charles is partially correct, because congestion does lead to safety issues, because you talked about people being impatient, and that's what I find that we have here in our community, is that people are trying to get someplace very fast, and they're not paying attention to what's going on around them. So, they're, you know, i.e., as you say, somebody stopped, somebody doesn't stop, somebody's, so there you go.
Yeah.
The right-hand edge by in the median, that's the fun one.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Are they trying to get through Glen Oak and 213?
Yeah.
Yeah.
As I said the other day, somebody passed me in the median on Molalla Avenue.
I'm sorry. Well, I think my observation, when it leads to a problem from congestion is the frustration.
Yeah.
You know, that, if, if everybody would just stay cool and wait their turn, that'd be fine. But you get a certain percentage of people that are, get frustrated and impatient, and then they'll do something, and everybody's kind of sitting in their car going, what are you doing?
Yeah, you see that.
It's just, it's like the lane merge weave, and the people that won't back off and let it merge, or the, I've got to be two, I can't be one. And then...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Honking horns and...
Well, we didn't, when, you know, I guess my question would be, when did we first hear the term road rage?
Yeah.
Probably in the last 10 years.
Probably longer than that.
You've been practicing it longer than that?
I was in LA in the 80s.
Okay.
I heard road rage, they were shooting at people.
Okay. I thought that was just LA, so...
No, New Orleans just happened.
Okay. So, development review. Here, we're getting into a little bit, maybe we'll go through this a little bit quicker. There are different requirements, depending upon the size of the development. Certainly, those of you on the planning commission are familiar with the difference between the traffic analysis letter and the transportation impact study. And the smaller developments don't have to go through as much. We just think that it's a fairer thing, and we don't necessarily learn a lot from a detailed analysis of a small development. Now, we do have a little bit of the hazard of the death by 1,000 cuts, but that's why we have our transportation system plan, to put that out. So, the development review is an additional step that focuses on the local. We have different requirements for zone changes, because they have to address the requirements of the transportation planning rule, where we have already assessed the underlying development according to the zoning. We have accounted for it in the transportation system plan. So, we're pretty solid on knowing our 20-year regional needs through our TSP.
How, how do we know when a development or a proposed change will overtax what we've got?
We make them do a traffic analysis and assess whether or not the additional impacts cause a, cause a deficiency. And when we, when we have an, when we have a development that is consistent with our zoning and our comprehensive plan, they only have to do short-term analysis. When they're looking at a zone change, we make them go out to the same planning horizon that we did for our TSP.
I'm thinking about something like a master plan for 20 years for a large shopping center or hospital or something?
Okay. Essentially, we make them go out, and we, we tell them to look at the impact 20 years out, the same as our TSP, and to assess what their more intense development would have in that year, in that context. And a lot of cases, we're able to determine that there's really not very great impact. In other cases, we have some, we have some impacts where we require them to do mitigation, and either advance a project, pay for proportionate share, or do something to bring that solution earlier in our planning horizon.
Would that be, would their impact be isolated? That is to say, 39 trips compared to nothing, or would that be 39 on top of existing?
Put it at 39 on top, not on top of existing. We'd have them do it, that 39 trips on top of what was predicted for that intersection in year 2030, or 2035, the same year as our transportation system plan. And that's...
Kind of follow-up question there?
Yeah.
So, I'm trying to imagine this. So, take Beaver Creek, let's assume that it had some industrial zoned land, multifamily, single family, maybe another school. And when we did the 20-year transportation plan for what Beaver Creek should look like, we had allocated trips based on each one of those zones.
Right.
And we actually go that far, so we allocate specific trips based on the zoning that abut that road.
Yes, that's what we actually did in the TSP.
Okay.
Yep. And if we have a significant change to it, I mean, I know, so there was a, there was a lot of controversy about the school bus maintenance facility there on Long Myers Road. Well, that was in an industrial zone, and, in fact, I think it's an allowable use. Wasn't that an allowable use? But, anyway, that school bus maintenance facility generated the same amount of traffic that we would expect from a traditional industrial development. So, there was no net impact of that. Now, that, since that wasn't allowable, I don't remember the details. But, yeah, that's the kind of thing that we, that we analyze when there's a, when there's a change.
I think most of the comments about that were because of school traffic, plus the buses in the same area.
Right.
And the, and the long-range model assumes Myers Road connection. So, the short-term, there is an impact. The long-term, not much of an impact.
John, can you talk about who does the transportation study, who reviews it, how can the public see it? How do they know we're just not making up numbers?
Okay. Well, the, the, traffic studies are required, when it, when a, when a developer comes in with land use application, they have to assess all various, all aspects of the city code. And essentially, the staff, you know, the staff planners are responsible for a lot of that. But for any of the traffic issues, they are referred to me, because I have a contract with the city to do that. There is a, the requirement is, the obligation is for the applicant to address the city criteria, and then the city staff, with my help, assess whether or not they have adequately addressed the criteria. Since the applicant's traffic engineer has to prepare the study, and then I review it to assess whether or not they have met the applicable requirements from the city code. Now, I don't go, in many cases, my, my role is to keep them honest about doing the work. I mean, I do not redo all the elements of their work. I, I look at the key factors they have used, and they're, it has to be prepared by a professional engineer who's putting his seal on it and saying, you know, I have done this according to the applicable standards, and by putting my seal on it, I'm guaranteeing that this works. So, a lot of these are, these are my colleagues with whom I have developed a rapport and trust, and can assess whether or not they have followed the applicable procedures. And we all pretty much use the same modeling, traffic software operations analysis tools. I make sure they have, have used the right assumptions, the right methodology. And in certain cases, they will ask my advice about certain things. So, I've got this, this information. Do you think the city is going to accept this data I have about pass-by trips for my fueling station? And they'll send me the stuff, and I'll look at that and say, well, gee, they've done extensive studies in Sandy and southeast Portland, and say, sure, I see no reason why the city shouldn't accept this. And that'll be part of the recommendation that I end up making, that you'll see in my comment letter on the development proposals. The obligation is for the applicant to prepare it, and I review it, and my findings are part of this, the city staff report, that determines whether or not they have met all applicable criteria from the city code. We also have, then, various conditions of approval. Now, you, you're typically seeing 60 or 100 conditions relating to these projects, and some of them are related to the setbacks and the plantings and the vegetation and stuff. And a handful of them are related to frontage improvements and traffic. and stuff, and a handful of them are related to frontage improvements and traffic, including the mitigation that they are required to do to meet their obligations to help install the rest of the, the network. In most cases, it is pretty, it's consistent with what's in the TSP, it's a matter of the timing. So that's why we'll tell some of these people that they have to install the turn lane or that they will have to, have to pay a proportionate share for installation of the turn lane at a later date. So that's kind of the, the process in terms of developer proving it, doing the analysis, me checking it, me working with staff to develop the conditions of approval.
Well, I think you hit the nail on the head when you talked about death by a thousand cuts because ninety percent of the time, we're reviewing something and the, and the glass is already full and we're pouring more water into it.
Well.
And then we end up with a situation where we have no way to help, to help mitigate the situation, so.
Well, to, to a certain extent Denise, that's true, but.
So hang, so hang on, one more.
Okay.
So, my frustration stems from the fact that we never seem to be able to get at the aspect of cumulative impact. And again, it's that glass of water. So you have a certain amount of traffic, you have this new thing coming in and then you have your full glass and then you have something else coming in and we don't look at the bigger picture. Because there is always a bigger picture. It's not just about that specific use and what its impact is, it's that use plus all the other things that go into that glass of water that cause the situation to be either lessened or exacerbated. So I, that, that, that's what I kind of find disconcerting and I, and I have, as you know, have the hardest time on this commission trying to reconcile that particular cumulative impact that I see. From my standpoint, I see it as a cumulative impact, but it's not being viewed that way. It's only being viewed as, you know, looking through this little isolated thing right here.
I couldn't agree with you more and a good example of that, I think, is the sewer moratorium. Where you know, eventually over a period of time, it all adds up and all of a sudden you've got an overload.
Literally, right?
Yeah, right. The other part of that, to kind of dovetail with what Denise is saying is that Oregon City is not an island that's isolated by itself. It's got all these tentacles feeding into Oregon City. I remember when they first built the two thirteen bypass, you could probably take a stroll right down the middle of that road when they first built it and not be too worried about getting hit by a car because the traffic was so low at that time. But with all the development in the outlined areas, it's gotten to the point now where that, that intersection, two thirteen and Beaver Creek Road was no problem when it was first built.
Right.
But it's become a big problem now.
Well, I, you know, I agree with a lot of what you've, what you've said. The other thing though, as a contrary statement would be that a lot of what people I think are complaining about is that it isn't the way it was. And as I explained earlier, we have adopted a standard that says we find a higher level of congestion to be acceptable. You know, we've, we've, we've redefined what it is to be obese. You know, we, we've, we've said, we can, we can be different. You know, we can have a higher level of congestion, we can, it's a new definition.
Oh, but who's the we?
And we don't have a, you know, we used to, we used to say, we used to say level of service D was the, was the maximum tolerable, that it was only a, a twenty-second, twenty-second average delay at an intersection. Beyond that was just, we couldn't do it. Since we have not, since we have not dedicated the resources to allow that free-flow condition to exist, we've had to accept a higher level of congestion. And I think a lot of what people are objecting to is that it is harder to make, you have to wait longer at an intersection, sometimes you have to wait for the second cycle, that making the left turn out onto Beaver Creek Road or Malala Avenue, it takes a lot longer, there's more of a constant stream of traffic, you have to wait longer to make that left turn. You know, it's, we have definitive criteria we've established and that's what we have to judge by, those criteria.
I guess, couple of things that, first, we have said more pain is acceptable, but we haven't said more pain is good.
Right.
And so we should always be striving to, to decrease the amount of pain. And the other question, the issue I have, it kind of gets to the whole, you know, are we an island thing, is how do you determine when you're, when somebody hands you a plan, how far out to go to look at the impacts? Because what, my for instance on that would be, you know, a development's happening in South End and a development's happening in Beaver Creek. They both can potentially have an impact on Seventh and Washington, but you stop blocks away.
Oh, absolutely.
And so, you know, I mean, how far down the path do you go before you say, it's so de minimis, it doesn't matter? And how, how do you make that determination that it's de minimis?
The reason, we have set, we have, we have actual numbers in our, in our guidelines for traffic impact analyses. And that is that we only care, we only require the developer's engineer to carry that analysis to intersections of collector and a, collector and collector or above intersections that are impacted by twenty or more trips during either the AM or the PM peak hour. So, I mean, that, that's the, that's the standard we use.
So if the South End development hits Seventh and Washington with nineteen trips and.
They don't have to analyze it.
And the Beaver Creek development hits Seventh and Washington with nineteen trips, it never happened.
Never happens.
Those thirty-six trips don't exist, or thirty-eight trips don't exist.
Well, that's right.
But it doesn't.
Except that we have analyzed it in the TSP. And the transportation system plan assumed both that South End and that Beaver Creek development were going to occur in the next twenty years. So we have done the analysis for Washington Street for year twenty thirty-five that accounts for both those developments. And on Washington Street, the volume is a little bit higher than today. And we don't know.
I was just using that as an example.
Yeah, I know, and I'm following up.
But it's true.
Yeah, yeah. So, in the more fully developed parts of the community, we're seeing relatively little change in the traffic volumes. We see the largest percentage change occurring at the fringes. Now, the other thing we have, we're expecting, based on Metro's, Metro's analysis and Metro's modeling, is we're going to see, be seeing fewer trips per capita being made over time. Now, part of that's what we talked about with the densities in Manhattan. It's easier, more, more auto-centric here, that's going to be decreasing somewhat over the next twenty years as we shift to more multi-nodal development, more ability to take walking and biking trips for short trips, more ability to take transit for some of our regional trips.
And our last acceptance of pain, I don't need that sour cream, I'm not making that trip.
Exactly, exactly.
Right, I like in the rain. Based on Damon's question.
Henry was actually next.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was just going to say, based on what Damon's saying, does that mean we as commissioners here have to delve deeper into what the developer says when they said it's okay? We have to think further down the road?
Well, what you're doing is relying upon the staff to analyze it relative to the written criteria. And when we find something that doesn't meet the criteria, we bring that to your attention and we suggest it as a condition of approval, like add that left turn lane. Or the condition of approval will be to pay a forty percent share of the right turn lane at. So, you know, we offer that as a condition of approval and you, bless it, you are the ones making the legislative decision, you know, to do that. So, I think you need not get into it, but if you have questions about how it was done, you know, we as staff are always willing to, to, you know, answer those for you, either in the, in the meeting or by way of explanation elsewhere.
Henry, you've talked about.
Henry, Henry's next.
What happens when V over C exceeds one? Is that grounds for saying we can't do it?
Well, it's interesting because actually the V over C cannot exceed one. So we have, in theory, well, Denise was telling us about the glass being full, actually what ends up happening is that glass represents the five to six PM peak hour. And when it fills up, it spills some into the four to five hour and some to the six to seven hour.
Eventually it gets to about eighteen hours.
It, it does.
And then what happens?
Well, and then it goes to nineteen.
And it implodes.
Um, I mean, I think that's when, you know, Damon was saying, you just decide, hey, I'm not going there.
Or you take an alternative route.
You take an alternative route or you choose some.
Or a different mode.
You choose a different mode or you just decide, I'm not doing it.
Or can we say, we don't need that development?
Well, we haven't typically been saying that.
Maybe we should.
No, I think the example is that you, you know, you think in terms of going to the, the fancy restaurant for your anniversary and you think, you know, the ideal time would be seven o'clock, but you don't make the reservation two, ten months before and they say, well, sorry, we don't have seven o'clock, how about eight-thirty? Say, well, okay, I'll adjust my time. Or you adjust the date, you know, you do some change. And I think as we have more and more hours when we're getting to that V over C of one or nearly one, we're going to see more of those changes in terms of behavior patterns, you know, the examples we've all talked about.
So we.
Do we add, but do we add restaurants?
You mean more traffic generated, of any sort?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Hey, John, the other thing, typically when we get to that V over C equal to one, we can also identify a capital project associated with it.
But we can't build it because we don't have any money.
Well, that depends. There's a lot of projects that we're funding.
It's all priority, it's all about priority.
Well, the priority is trying to keep the, the traffic down.
Well, no, the, the priority is saying if you've got ten projects that are being considered and you, you have to decide which one of the ten you want to fund. But we're, we've got about fifteen minutes left and I want to make sure John can finish his presentation.
Could I ask you a quick question here?
Yes, go ahead.
On how it's done, if a developer, for example, is required to put up, say, ten percent of a traffic signal cost, does he typically put the money up in cash or post a bond and does the money go into a fund for that specific signal or just into a general capital improvement fund? And then if the signal's, say, not built within five years, does he get the, get a refund?
So typically, I'm thinking of the Clackamas County, when they put their campus up on red soils, that's one where we took in a fair amount of funding and it was, it was set in an account that was specific to a handful of improvements that affected, that were in the key areas. So Beaver Creek Road was one of them. In fact, we're hoping to use some of that funding even that we're still holding on to for the right turn lane on Beaver Creek Road at two thirteen. So typically it's held, and held for that particular project. Unlike SDCs, which don't necessarily get held for any one particular project. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, more or less.
Bob, you had a question?
Yeah, we've talked all night tonight about technology, the technical aspects of traffic. I think the solution lies in the political aspect of it. What I mean by that is, these things have to be funded. They're not going to be funded by this, this commission. They're going to be funded by the elected officials that are going to give us the money to solve these problems. And unless that money is forthcoming, just like Denise said, we're going to be always dealing with the problems where the glass is full. So the, the solution really is in the, the political arena, not, not this. We've got so much information and technology, it's, it's running out our ears. We know what to do, we know what the solution is on the ground, but unless we get that funding, either from the state or, or the feds, I mean, we're just going to have more and more choosing the lesser of two evils, always. So that would be my thinking in terms of looking at what the solution to some of these problems are.
Bob, they're taking that out of your pay.
Yeah, more fees.
For this, for this commission.
Yeah, I've got a lot of zeros behind that decimal point.
So, John, can you wrap this up?
Yep, we'll go through a few.
I was just going to say, this particular topic here, the city's had an SDC forum, we've got a web page pretty much developed to it.
We've seen it.
We might want to just skip that section, John.
Anyway, systems development charges levied against, against development. Speed zones, there are a couple of things I thought would be interesting for you to, to hear about.
Oh, that's a sore subject.
The speed zones, it's posted speed and they're prescribed by the state law. It's administered by the Oregon Department of Transportation. Believe it or not, the city cannot go out and set, to set the speeds on streets. We can ask, petition for a speed zone review from the Oregon Department of Transportation. We, we can provide various data, we can provide a recommendation, but it's ODOT who sets the speed zone. Traffic signals, the warrants are prescribed by the manual on uniform traffic control devices that I introduced earlier. There are nine warrants, three of them relate to traffic volumes, the others don't. Meeting the warrants is the minimum, but if you meet one, that doesn't necessarily mean you should put it in. There's a fair degree of engineering judgment and the necessity to evaluate how it fits in with the rest of the system. Terms of traffic signals, there are kind of two main things, there's either fixed time or actuated. You'll find fixed time signals in downtown areas, like in downtown Portland, where they're all set up. Most of what we have here in Oregon City are actuated signals, so they respond to the traffic at the intersection. You've all seen where if there's nobody in the left turn lane, the green arrow doesn't come up, it just skips it. Traffic signals are actually pretty good, they're fairly smart in terms of trying to optimize the traffic flow going through them. The timing is complex, you have to have minimums and maximums, you have to count for pedestrians, you have to count for emergency preemption, but you know, when it's emergency preemption, it doesn't, it always will give the time for the pedestrian to finish crossing. So, anyway, it's a, it's a complicated system and, you know, that's why putting in a traffic signal is two hundred thousand dollars just for the, just for the installation of the signal and it probably costs, you know, it, just the electricity to run it, probably a hundred to two hundred dollars a month, just to keep all those lights blinking and it has to have annual, annual service.
The one on the Oregon City West Lynn Bridge going north and south is horrible.
Yes.
Yep, well, the other thing about traffic signals is, everybody insists that the amount of time they had to wait is three times as long as they actually did.
No, I'm, I'm not saying that.
That's been proven.
I'm not saying that. It, the, the bridge traffic backs up in both directions because it gives a preemption to one, one flow of traffic than the other. I mean, it, it doesn't seem like it's equalized and I use that all the time.
Right.
So I see it from all the different sides. North, I go north-south, north, south-north, east-west, and it's, it's just amazing to me that it, it doesn't work as well as it could.
Since you brought it up and before we run out of time, as soon as I found out we were going to have this meeting with you, that's been my number one thing I wanted to present.
that's been my number one thing I wanted presented tonight, is how do we work with the state? Anybody who's stood on that corner, from Bob to, to, um, um, one of our other commissioners out there, Brian Shaw, we've all stood in that corner and watched that traffic. It causes so much, um, road rage there because of the light. It does take long for everybody coming off the bridge. But somebody in the state or somebody moved the cross or the no left turn sign from up above where you can see it down below. So now everybody's honking at each other and the traffic honking that takes place because no one sees the no left hand turn. They, they just turn left and everybody who knows they're not supposed to is honking and people are yelling, throwing water bottles out their windows at each other.
Okay, well, complain to the owner of the signal.
But that's the state and I said, I asked, how does the state work with the city then?
So the state and the city, um, in that particular location, ours is really just reporting it, kind of telling them about conveying kind of, these kind of messages. Um, we've got, the state is actually one of those groups, the maintenance groups, their, their traffic signal group. They do an outstanding job.
They do.
And they will send, I mean, I'm thinking of, uh, our main signal lead, I mean Glen Oak Road, two thirteen, he, he's been out there more ti- he, he, they are very responsive.
The bridge.
I've been asking about it for a while, John, because being a store owner right on that corner-
I'm telling you that they have, you know, they've eked out a lot of economies in these signals down there. And that one there, maybe they, maybe they haven't been to that in a year, so I don't know. We'll have to look at that, Tom, but they're very responsive. And they, they, they come out and they'll send us a detailed assessment of what was wrong, what they did. It could just be, you know, I mean, there could be a signal programming glitch and maybe they need to look at that, but-
It's been two, it's been two years since Bob ran for office when he was down there watching that. We actually have trucks running over the sidewalk to get around people trying to turn left. There's truck, tire tracks on the sidewalk showing where trucks don't, and other people don't care. They're just going to get around that car no matter what. And it's just a mess down there for those of us-
You mean people trying to make a, a left-
People trying to turn right, waiting for someone to turn left. And they're actually going over the sidewalk and people are having to step back. And I've been saying it since I opened my store down there two years ago and nothing's changed.
Yeah.
But it's dangerous and someone's going to get killed down there. There's been accidents that I've seen, but some child or somebody in that corner is going to get run over by a truck. Sorry.
Well, John said, matter bring it to attention of the signal people.
So I'm going to say them to bring that up all of a sudden?
No, no.
No.
Region one, maintenance is right over on Lawn Field Road.
We'll, we'll pursue it. I don't know when the last time it was that we looked specifically at that, but that left turn is an illegal movement. I mean, it happens.
But there's no visual, I mean, to me that sign should be on the very first cross beam of the bridge. As soon as you pull onto it, there should be a thing that says, no left turn. So the whole time you're driving down that bridge, you have time to think what you're going to do, but go left. You know, and it's hidden and you, you start to pull up and a car comes across.
Two dedicated no left turn signs at that intersection when you're coming off the bridge into Oregon City.
No, no, there isn't. But you can't, but you can't see- There's one down here, not up there, as this arrow's pointing, forward or turning, but doesn't say no left hand turn.
You're right, it's not, it's not on the cross signal. It's, they're on, they're on the signal pole in the one here, you're right. But there's two dedicated signs at that intersection.
People don't see the one that's over there on the left side.
I think they see it just fine, but I think they disobey it.
You're watching the light, you don't see something.
Well, I think it's, I think it's both, but it needs to be like that.
We need to conclude this and, and, you know, one of the things I'm hearing, uh, we've been hearing ever since I've been on this commission, the number one complaint is lack of enforcement. It's not necessarily that the speed limit isn't posted or the left turn isn't posted. It's lack of enforcement. And we see that, you know, every neighborhood, including Holly Lane, is complaining about people driving too fast. So it's not that the speed limit isn't posted. It's people driving ten or fifteen miles over the speed limit that's causing those problems. But, uh, we're, we're pretty much out of time, so let's wrap this up.
I've got just a couple more-
But we want to make sure we get Louisa, who's behind you.
Yes.
The crosswalks marked and unmarked. Every intersection has a crosswalk unless it's marked, crosswalk closed. Also a lot of information, a marked crosswalk is not necessarily safer. Extensive study done, uh, in North Carolina about ten years ago comparing the rates. There was an interest in electric vehicles and some other topics, but we've exhausted our time, so there we are.
Okay. So, uh, any, uh, questions or comments from the audience? If, if you want to speak, now is your time to come forward.
Can I just add a quick comment while she's walking up there?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, a couple of things. So all of our traffic studies, again, just to reiterate, we have standards. You either meet the standard or you don't. You don't meet the standard, you don't get to build your development. Um, we all agree on those standards as a community. It goes before Planning Commission, City Commission ultimately adopts it. The other thing is that the traffic studies, uh, which are, again, are reviewed by two transportation engineers, are available for the public to review. Uh, all of our planning applications go on our website. And it's welcome for anyone to hire any transportation engineer to review as well or just to look at.
But see, why do we have to do that? Why would we have to hire our own traffic engineer to review?
We're hoping you don't, that's why we have two eyes, right?
We don't want to do that.
Four eyes, two people, um, looking at everything. The other thing is that, you know, as a jurisdiction, we have balances. And as the state, we balance things. We balance transportation with other needs. And if we had unlimited money, would we really want all of our roads to be four lanes and start taking everyone's property and have every road be that big? You know, something to think about, right? Um, so we want to balance some of these urban design things as well as with, um, transportation flow. And then, um, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. So please identify yourself.
Sure. I'm Louisa Ganyu. I live at one oh one Center Street. And, um, I really appreciate all of you being here. I hope that the commission, Planning Commission and Transportation will pay attention to our residential areas. And of course, in particular to the McLaughlin Historic District. It is a historic district and we're trying to keep the streets more residential than, um, cars speeding through it. It seems as though people use these streets to get from one neighborhood to another and without thinking that they're going through a residential area. So we're working on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, uh, we've, we've more or less exhausted our allotted time. Is there any discussion between the commission or the advisory committee?
I would like to-
I'd like to state something.
Yes, sir.
I was hoping during this meeting that we get to the point where the TAC would learn how much detail or should, or can the TAC get involved in transportation issues? Not in residential planning, but more in, uh, areas like the Cove and, um, the Willamette Falls Legacy Project. We would like to, to perform our mission of advising the Planning Commission, the City Commission, uh, the Urban Renewal Commission. But we can't do that unless we start getting involved in the transportation issues of those particular kinds of projects. And I think the, the TAC as a whole would like to be able to complete that goal of advising the other commissions after we've done research. So I think that, uh, we really don't know at what point we can get involved or should get involved and, and how much detail in those larger projects.
So, from the planning point of view, I can answer a couple of questions for you. So again, we have lots of studies and plans and, um, criteria that we use to make our decisions to see if you meet this V over C level or not. We also have a public comment period with all of our applications. And the TAC is more than welcome to put in comments if they want to, either individually or as a group. But it would all happen within that public comment period that applies to everything that essentially has a traffic study. Um, some of the other committees, like a natural resource committee, will sometimes put in, uh, their comments in applications as well. And you're welcome to do that either as a group or as individually. But our planning process is very regulated. And we have certain groups with certain authorities to review it and very criteria. And we go through lots of processes to establish what those criteria are. And, uh, unless the TAC, um, and there is no thing that says that applicants have to go before the TAC. We can suggest that they go before it. It's just not one of the standards and-
So how do we make it a standard?
Well, you can talk with John about that, but in our land use process, we have a lot of state requirements and goals and, uh, a clear process of how to move through our transportation and land use process. And I'm not really sure what you would be looking at if you're just wanting to look at John's report to see if they really do meet the V over C or not. Um, but we do have an obligation to provide clear and objective standards in everything that we do. And we want to make sure that whatever happens, we make sure that the applicant knows what we're looking at. We have clear standards. We write clear reports and clear findings showing if they meet those or not. Um, so you can certainly add comments during public comment period. But at this point, we follow whatever our municipal code says to do for process. And, um, we could look at changing that, but again, it would go through a process. And Planning Commission is the body that has the authority to make decisions on certain items. And then other items, they make a preliminary decision and a recommendation to City Commission. The City Commission makes that decision. There's nothing in our code that requires any land use action to go before anyone other than the Planning Commission or City Commission. You have to meet with the Neighborhood Association, that's a little bit different.
So how would, how would we get notice of something that's pending?
We can add you to our notice, notification email. So we have an email that we send to, um, people when we have, uh, complete applications. Actually, let me step back. We have a great website and I can, um, bring up the website if you want to see it. Again, we post all of our notifications on our website. And on our website, we have an RSS feed. And once we post an application there, we have a minimum of a two week public comment period, but they're generally at least three weeks. If there's a public hearing, they're more like a, a month and a half or something like that as a minimum. And once we post an application on our website, everyone who's signed up for the RSS feed gets an automatic email saying, hey, there's an application here, come look at it. We, as a jurisdiction, decide to send all of our notification to the C I C as well as the Neighborhood Association Chairs. And so you can work with your Neighborhood Association Chairs to get that information. You can look at our website, you can sign up for the RSS feed on our website. We want to give everybody as much information as we can. Um, managing personal emails is a little bit difficult for us. We have a small staff, um, but anyone is more than welcome to sign up for the RSS feed.
We, well, Henry, Louisa, I believe, sent that email with that link, uh, to that particular webpage. Didn't necessarily automatically sign you up, but we sent it to all the TAC members. I want to say back when this idea of getting together a joint work session, I don't know, how long ago was that? Three or four months ago?
I don't remember getting it.
Well, we sent it, we can reset it.
Yeah, we want to make sure, in the Planning Department, we want as many eyes on applications as we can, right? We want public involvement, we want your input. We have criteria and again, we just make a decision based on the criteria at hand. It's not, you know, if we like it or not, or it's, do they meet the traffic impact? Is it acceptable for our level of congestion that we adopted as a community, yes or no? Um, so we can certainly, we want to share any information with as many people as we want, as we're willing to look at it. It's a good read.
So, John, would this be a, one of the new member orientation items?
Oh, that's a good idea. It's not now.
Yeah, I know, but could it be?
Sure, yeah.
I have a request.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, John, for the presentation. Unfortunately, we didn't allow any time for us to have a discussion amongst ourselves. And so I would like to ask my fellow Planning Commissioners if you would be amenable to having a follow-up session with the TAC where we could actually just talk about some issues that we see that we might be able to help each other with.
I think that's a good idea, but I, I'd like maybe to have-
At another work session.
If Laura could put together a framework, uh, to, uh, help, uh, TAC understand where they can fit into the review process and have an opportunity to, uh, provide some input so that, uh, they're, they're, uh, not just on the fringe someplace, but they're, they're, uh, one of the players in the process. And I, I'm thinking kind of in the same vein as, uh, if, if you have a, a project that's subject to historic review, then the historic review gets, obviously they get involved. So it would seem to me logical-
They have authority, though, to make decisions.
It would seem logical to somehow integrate TAC and any other of the, uh, committees that have a stake in the process to at least know that there's, uh, something going on that they can weigh in on. So I, I would agree with Laura if we could schedule a follow-up work session, uh, maybe in a, a month or two.
You just called me Laura, that's all right. That's, that's, I'm, I'm impressed.
I think the work session is needed, not just emails, exchanging or something like that.
We need to talk to each other in person. I think doing it by email is, is-
And ten minutes of talking is worth nine days of emails.
So, so as Denise suggested, I'd like to, uh, say if, if we could schedule another work session, maybe in a month or two, that we could, uh, kind of follow up on what we've talked about tonight.
And so in the work session, just to be clear, um, so we make sure that we have the right people here to staff it. You would like an overview of the land use process, it sounds like?
No, no.
Just a time to chat?
Yes.
Anything from us that you need or-
Well, I think it'd be useful if, if we had a, um, um, an agenda that would help us walk through the process to, to figure out when we can have meaningful involvement.
Well, that, that was not really where I was going with that. Where I was going was, we just had a, a lot of information given to us. Some, some of the TAC members may have never seen this before.
Right.
We should have an opportunity to have a discussion with one another about what we heard and where we have, following up on what you're saying, commonality. I don't want to have you put together something about how the whole land use process operates or anything like that. I don't want to make this extra work for you. But we should be able to talk with them and they with us about what we heard, what we see maybe are some issues that we might be able to work together on in the community. I don't know. I was hoping we were going to have a talk, be able to talk to each other. It's great listening to the information, but it's, it's not, I want this.
Do you want to keep going till like nine thirty?
No.
Well, we wouldn't have enough time.
No, I, I think, I think-
I'm just putting it out there.
That's why I said a follow-up meeting.
I think we've laid the groundwork and it would probably be useful if the people with TAC got together and talked among themselves about the issues that they're concerned about based on what they heard tonight. And if we could come back together in a month or two and have a follow-up discussion. Uh, and as Denise has said, we, we, we don't have to be sitting around the dais. If we had just a, a big table in, in the middle of the room, we could just talk to each other.
Okay. And also one more thing, I wanted to, um, thank Commissioner Mahoney for putting this all together and suggesting that the two groups, um-
I did what?
I know, right? And, um, just to give the public a bunch of information about what we do and we review traffic is, is a great suggestion as well. Thank you.
We actually had had one meeting with her, but we wanted another.
Um, I think in the interim, the other element which gets to their concern and, and kind of has been, I mean, to a certain extent, I, I didn't, I wasn't aware that TAC wasn't having, uh, as a group, having a comment time, would be, uh, on plans. I think it would be beneficial if both TAC and PrAC, um, got notification to whoever their, their staff person is to put items on their agenda. So if there's a development or whatever that has transportation or park implications, that it's just part of their meeting agenda and maybe it's, you know, we got these three land use things and, uh, they're all single family developments, so, you know, do we want to talk about them? And you guys can say, eh, no.
Well, we send our stuff to all of the managers and I just want to-
But, but I-
I want to tell you guys to be careful because when it goes before the committees, I don't want you guys to get a, a false sense that there's more authority there than there is, right? You know, you can like it or not like it, but we again, go back to these criteria- You know, you can like it or not like it, but we again, go back to these criteria, do they meet the criteria or not, and I don't want to waste committees' time looking at land use.
We don't want to waste your time either.
Right.
I'm not trying to sound.
No.
And there's timelines, and sometimes there isn't time for a committee meeting to occur before it comes before us because you got, and I think we all understand that, but I think there's an opportunity there, like you said, in some cases, things are there for a month and a half, a meeting is going to happen with TAC and PrAC in that month and a half, do they want to look at it and make any comment at all? And if they do, there's an opportunity to submit a piece of paper or have a member come and do their comment. I would say probably 90% of the time for both of them, there's going to be a, oh, thanks, and that's going to be the total extent of their involvement, but to miss out, you know, like neither TAC or PrAC came and commented on either one of the concept plans, as a TAC or PrAC, they did as individuals, and they did maybe as the blue ribbon committee.
They wrote a letter.
But, you know, so I, you know, there's some of these developments that are, you know, like the icon one on Peas Road that I really would have liked to hear TAC's, you know, comments on, I just assumed they were there, but you know, now that I think about it, no, they weren't, you know, and so.
Well, I think at the very least, there ought to be a notification to the chair of the committee, and the chair can notify everybody else on the committee.
Or put it on the agenda, or whatever they choose to do.
I have a question.
The one thing I was thinking about that, as we're talking, that it would probably, we don't necessarily need a whole summary of the land use process, but it would be useful if you could, between now and when we have this next work session, just give us an outline of the criteria that is used for the land use decision, that, what I'm thinking is, what is discretionary? You know, identify what's discretionary and what's a fixed criteria.
You're talking about more for TAC, not for, I mean, we know what it is.
Exactly, exactly.
And that's my question, so if TAC's going to be giving you back feedback on a land use application, what is the criteria by which they're giving you feedback?
That's my point.
Because they can't just tell you, we like it, we don't like it.
They can.
They can, but that's not, that's not going to help us.
That's not basis for any sort of regulatory.
Title 17, they're all in there.
I think Denise is right, it would be useful in a month or so to come back and have another work session to discuss that, so as you said, they don't have unrealistic expectation, they can just say, oh, we don't like that project, that there's.
Or maybe they really do like it.
Or they really do like it, because it's their favorite store.
But like is not a criteria.
Yeah, if we had some objective criteria that we can talk about and figure out how that can be facilitated.
And that's why I'm saying, get that stuff to them, get them on their agenda, so maybe they have a meeting or two with an item or two with potentially this criteria to go, you know, this is just kind of a waste of our time, or, you know, yeah, there's three things that we can comment on, so we don't waste our time, we deal with those three things, and we, you know, it's a 10-minute item rather than a 35-minute item about like or dislike of something, you know, and so that there's some time to maybe see if those wheels need to be greased or if they even need to be part of the machine.
Sure. Okay, so just to summarize, so I know moving forward, we will distill down what the criteria is so you could take a look at it, so you can become more familiar with that, and then we'll sort of decide the next steps after that. I will send an email that will include the RSS feed link and then also a little bit of background on who we send notification to for land use and when, and the appropriate time to comment and the public comment period, and we have a little thing on public comments and when they're good, was when they talk about approval criteria. So I can provide all that information to you guys between, before that.
That'd be great, thank you, and John, thank you.
So Henry, you don't have that memorized from your years of reviewing plans?
I probably could come up with a few points, yeah.
Yeah, the other thing was, is that.
I think we quadrupled it since then.
I know we have a few new people on the TAC and I don't know everybody, we didn't do any introductions, and we can do that the next time and move on.
But the one thing we do know is, we're advisory and we know advice is not decision.
Be glad.
Yes, we are.
Okay, so do we have any communications before we adjourn?
Not this evening.
I do want to say for the record, while I love giving Mr. Mahoney credit for things because he is an awesome guy, Tony Conkle had already arranged, we've had a work session with TAC before.
Yeah, with all the different committees.
We just haven't had it recently, and I think we had talked amongst ourselves about trying to get back on that schedule before Tony left us.
Abandoned us.
Abandoned us, yes, thank you, abandoned us to get back on that schedule to do another round robin with the other committees because we do have things to talk to them about, and this one is probably one of the more important ones, so.
Mr. Chairman, point of information.
Yes, sir.
From now on, do I refer to as awesome lady or awesome woman?
You're awesome guy, you're awesome guy.
You can use either of those, that'll work.
Yeah, and how come there aren't any women on this TAC? This is really, this is kind of.